Okay. Hi, everybody. This is a meeting of the Greenfield School Committee. This is our regular meeting and we are at the John Zahn Community Center at 35 Pleasant Street in Greenfield, Massachusetts. Today is Wednesday, September 11th, 2019. It is 6:35 PM. Can we have a roll call, please?
Member Carrick.
Yeah.
Here.
Here.
And the ward.
Yes.
And the child.
Yes.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the 8:14 and 8:19 draft minutes moved by Member Exstrom? And I'll second. It's both together. 14 and 19. 14 is this one here where we didn't have a quorum. I see Member Johnson. Can you engage your microphone? Thank you.
On page three, at the bottom, it says CJ called the question. I think that was GJ calling the question.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Member Hollins?
I recall there was a question about the Health Task Force presentation. I recall there was a question about a parent's right to ask not to be included. And I believe there was clarification that it was in their policy. Am I wrong? And I believe there's a whole law on that and we were going to check up on it.
Okay.
And I just...
I do remember that conversation.
I remember the superintendent clarified from the policy a parent has a right. But I think it's important because there's a whole statute on this and the parent's right to say, "I don't want to participate."
Are you asking to change the minutes?
I'm asking to include that discussion if we had it because I think it was important.
So what I'm hearing you request is to include one sentence that says,
The committee discussed...
Committee recognize that parents may opt out. It's there?
Yeah, I think it's there.
Parents can choose to opt out. There it is.
...legal research.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
If you're asking.
It is line three of the paragraph, Member Hollins, page two. Any other discussion on the minutes?
On the top of page three, on superintendent evaluation, was there not a discussion about whether or not the state was changing the requirements?
There's a little capture of our discussion here.
It's Dussey dropping required superintendent evaluation.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Edits? Yes.
Who seconded the motion?
I seconded the motion. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I think that was everyone, right? Bill, you were...
Yes.
Thank you. Unanimous. Okay. So I forgot to mention that we are being recorded live and broadcast live by GCTV. If there's anyone else that is recording today, I see Melina Bordeaux from the Greenfield Recorder is recording today. Is anyone else recording? Okay. Perfect. Thank you. We just have to state that for the record. All right. We'll move on to public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment today? All right. And if you could just please press the button on the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Sorry about that. Doug Selwyn, 38 Forest Avenue, Greenfield. Happy new school year. Two things. One is I wanted to let people know that on September 20th, there's some large events happening around the world. There's a global climate strike that is happening by students all around the world, kind of inspired by a Swedish teenager who actually struck her school every Friday and sat outside of Swedish Parliament to say, "You need to do something about climate change." Well, there is a climate strike around the world happening on September 20th. So some students in some schools are actually going to Boston to lobby the legislature during the school day. But in the evening, and I don't know what's happening in the Seattle school... Or Seattle, I guess I'm not there. Greenfield schools. But in some places, they're having teach-ins and looking, focusing on the climate issues. So I just wanted to let you know that was happening. And at 5:00 PM, there's going to be a rally on the Commons downtown with groups from all different angles related to climate change, bringing people together to talk about it and to say, "What can we do?" So that's happening on Friday, September 20th at 5:00 PM on the Commons. And the second thing I wanted to say is I really, 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 really hope that this year you can figure out how to hire a curriculum coordinator. The idea of trying to coordinate curriculum from K-12 when there's nobody who's actually overseeing that is near impossible. And so you leave the teachers fending for themselves or hopefully at least at grade level, but then coordinating from first grade to second, second to third, up through 12 in a coherent program's really hard to do if nobody's kind of overseeing that. And I know that money's an issue. Money's always an issue. But if this is about schools and education, I think that there's almost nothing more important than having somebody who's really good coordinating what happens in curriculum. So however it needs to happen, I would strongly hope that that can happen. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Doug. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment today? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to reports. I will just quickly say a very, very big thank you to all of our faculty, staff, and administrators for getting the school year off to a great start. There is so much work that goes into getting the school year up and running and we recognize that and appreciate each and every one of you. So thank you very much for that. Also, a thank you to committee members. We have three school committee meetings back-to-back. We had one Monday. We have one today. And we have another scheduled for Monday. This is a big push. We have a lot of important business and I appreciate each of you making the time for this service. So thank you very much. And I'll yield now to the superintendent.
Thank you. In your packets, you have the newsletters from all schools as we provide to you every month highlighting some of the terrific events happening right away as we start the school year. We have had a really great start to the 2019-20 school year. Our theme for convocation this year was "You Make a Difference." And we opened our year with every single member of the Greenfield Public Schools, faculty, teachers, instructional assistants, custodians, secretaries, food service workers, transportation workers, every single person that works together in a team to make this district the place it is. And that theme really carries through. So we've had a really strong start and we're highlighting some of the things happening already in our schools. I do want to note that our enrollment has continued to rise and say steady or rising as we've opened the school year. We're up over 1,815 students as we sit here today. So continuing to see students enrolling every day and positive news spreading. Girls' field hockey is out there playing tonight, so go Green Wave. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments for the superintendent? Oh, was that it? Were you raising your hand? Okay. Okay. Great. So we will move on to subcommittees. I don't believe that any of our subcommittees have met since our last regular meeting. Is that accurate? I'm seeing no. All right. School committee representatives. Member Exstrom has the collaborative met?
We have not met. We're meeting on September 26th at the train station. What is it called now?
The Olver Center.
Transit Center. That's it. Yes. So we have a meeting then.
Okay. Thank you. And Member Hollins, planning and construction?
Planning and construction met at the library with two consultants on construction, trying to help get at facts about the difference between renovation and new construction, the difference in cost. That was the whole meeting.
Thanks. Member Hollins, it would be really helpful to me if you could get the minutes from the, I think, the past couple of meetings, if they're available. Would you mind doing that and forwarding them to the group?
I can ask for them. I think I mentioned that there's a complete report of everything that this committee did last year. It's an annual report. And I thought that was going to be forwarded to you. It's comprehensive. Everything planning and construction does, everything it did, everything it looked at. And the mayor's office has that, but I'll see if I can get that to you.
Thanks. Thanks.
Clerk's office.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Member Hollins? All right. Well, we will move on to our business. Ms. Liz LaFond is here to present to us on the open meeting law. This is part of the commitment that we made related to our open meeting law violation claim. And she has prepared a slideshow for us. So we may need to turn ourselves in our seats to be able to see the screen. I'll probably actually come around the table. And Liz is going to start us off and walk through the slides and then we'll take some questions. We'll go from there. There is also a printed version of this in your packet if you'd like to follow along with the printed version.
So hi, everybody. Nice to be back here. I thought that PowerPoint would be the easiest way to sort of slide through the basics. And if you... Anyone has a question, please stop me and ask it if you'd like or if...
Liz, can you... It's actually still on, but if you could just move it closer.
Or if it suits you better.
Super.
I guess you could hold your questions to the end and we could do them then. Whatever you prefer works for me. So as you all know, the purpose of the open meeting law is to recognize the bounds between government accountability and government efficiency by ensuring transparency of public meetings. It requires access to meetings by certain... It requires... Phew. Should not try to read your notes and look at the slides at the same time. So it requires public notice of meetings, including the agenda and the topics the chair reasonably anticipates discussing at the meetings. It requires open deliberations and it requires access to the public and allows for public participation in your open meetings as you're discussing the business of the school committee. So the open meeting law provides for certain deliberations to take place in executive session and it allows for maintaining confidentiality of certain records in executive session. So the public notice must be posted with your full agenda for all meetings. It must be posted, as you all know, I'm sure this is basic stuff for you, 48 hours in advance of the meeting with your city clerk and/or if they require it also to be posted on the town website. Notices must be available to the public 24/7. And meetings must be open to public and they must be able to attend and participate unless the body is in executive session for one of the 10 allowable reasons, which we will review towards the end of this slideshow. Minutes must be kept for all meetings, open and executive, including subcommittees. And there's requirements for how minutes... For the timelines around minutes, the submission of minutes, which is the Attorney General describes... The law actually describes as 30 days or three meetings of the public body, whichever is longest. Requirements. So 48 hours conspicuously visible to the public at all hours excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays. The notice must include the date, time, place, and topics the chair reasonably anticipates discussing from time to time. And sometimes when committees post their agendas far in advance, topics can come up between the time it was posted and the time that the meeting occurs, in which case the committee, the body is encouraged, it must update the agenda, the publicly posted agenda. It must update the agenda with the time and date of the additions noted on the posting. Regional or public bodies post on... Either with each city or town clerk and/or the alternative method, which occurs when the regional board votes to post on their website, making it a little bit easier. So what is a meeting? I guess is the... Is at the crux of the issue. And it's a deliberation by the public body with respect to any matter within the body's jurisdiction. Now, the open meeting law talks about what deliberation is, and it is any oral, written, or electronic communication on the business of the public body between or among a quorum of the public body. Quorum is a majority of members. Now, the open meeting law does allow for members to talk to... Like a member may talk to another member, right? About business. And where it gets tricky is if you are a seven-member committee and two members talk about something and those two members now both talk to another member, four members have become involved in the discussion of the topic and you've now just had a serial discussion or deliberation. So caution is always encouraged when talking to other members about business before the public body. Allowable exclusions are the distribution of meeting agenda scheduling or procedural information, distribution of reports or documents to discuss. And it's important to remember, provided you are not providing an opinion on any of those documents as they're being distributed. A lot of this happens these days via email. Sometimes a blessing and a curse. Sometimes we hit "reply all" before we've even thought about it and we have shared an opinion or something similar to an opinion with our fellow board members. Super important that if you are... Even sometimes when just asking for more information on a particular topic, to reply directly to the sender, typically the superintendent or the board secretary, and not to hit "reply all," so that when the superintendent or board secretary provides that additional information, they will provide it to all members all at once. Does that make sense? That "reply all" is a slippery slope. Or it can be. So members do not deliberate and the gathering is not a meeting if it's an onsite inspection of a project or program. If committee members meet at a school construction site, for example, committee members may take notes of questions, comments, concerns, and they would then share those questions, comments, and concerns with the full body at the next regular open meeting. You are not in a meeting if you are in a public or private gathering, including a conference or training on... Or social or other event. That happens to be an example of the MASCE Annual Conference, interestingly. That just caught me off guard. So you all are encouraged to develop professionally and you could easily have a quorum of your committee at any one of these training sessions. There was just an event down at CES in North Hampton and there were a couple of committees there represented by a majority of their body. They were simply there to learn and did not have deliberations. The body may attend... The quorum of the body may attend a meeting of another public body that complied with the open meeting law. If there's an intention for the two bodies to deliberate on any matter, that meeting should be posted as a joint meeting of the both bodies so that that deliberation can take place. Otherwise, the visiting members should only communicate by open participation in the meeting on those matters discussed by the host body. In other words, you would sign up for public discussion or you might be called on by the Board of Select people to answer specific questions. A session of the town meeting. The open meeting law says that participants in a town meeting, discussions by participants in a town meeting, is excluded from the open meeting law. So during an open meeting around access and participation, I know you all do allow remote participation here in Greenfield and there are some things that you must always remember. Your mayor and/or city council here or both approved that remote participation. Regional districts may do so by a majority vote of the regional committee. Physical attendance at the meeting must be unreasonably difficult. So open meeting law allowed public remote participation as a way to increase participation by public body members at public meetings and not as a way to circumvent attending a public meeting. The Attorney General has, in her facts, strongly advised that if a public body member is able to attend the open meeting, that they do so. It must be unreasonably difficult for you to attend. A quorum of the public body must be physically present. A person chairing the meeting must be physically present. It could be the chair of the committee or it could be another person who's designated to fill in when the chair is not present. All remote participants must be clearly visible if it's... If you are doing so visibly. And certainly must be audible to all persons present. If you are participating, if your remote participation is via video, it is required that the person participating remotely must be visible by all members of the body physically present. But that the... Those physically present do not necessarily have to be visible to the person participating remotely. Must be clearly audible. If you have technical difficulties during remote participation, it's advised that reasonable steps, that discussion be suspended while reasonable steps are taken to correct any technical difficulties so that all members, both physically present and those participating remotely, can hear everything being discussed. All votes in when there's remote participation must be taken by roll call. And the remote participants and the reason for the remote participation must be announced by the person chairing the meeting. The chair must, as in any other meeting, inform attendees of any recordings. And access and participation also includes public comment. And those wishing to comment publicly at open public meetings require the permission of the chair. So we all know, public may attend and quite often do. I've been to a few of your meetings and this is the sparse, most sparsely attended meeting I've ever been to. I think you're lucky in that regard. So you're doing something right. People want to be here and they want to talk to you. They want to be heard. The public may not address the public body without the permission of the chair or otherwise disrupt the meeting. If someone is disruptive to the meeting, the chair may and should ask the person to stop being disruptive. And if that does not occur and the person continues to be disruptive, the chair may call for a recess and ask the person to leave the meeting, even if that person is a member of the public body. We all hope that does not happen very often, but we know it does occasionally occur. A public... A member of the public may make an audio or video recording of an open session upon notification to the chair and subject to reasonable requirements, which really just means they may set up a video or audio recorder as long as it's not disruptive to the progress of the meeting. The chair must inform other attendees of the recording at the beginning of the meeting. Adrian seems to have that down and does that each and every meeting. I've seen a few of your meetings on your video. You guys run a pretty tight ship. So minutes of meetings are public records and there are public records associated with minutes of meetings. Minutes of both open and executive session meetings, including subcommittees, must include the date, time, and place of the meeting, the members present or absent. If any members arrive late or leave early, the minutes must be... It must be so noted in the minutes. A summary of discussion for each subject should be included in the minutes, must be included in the minutes. And a summary really is enough that someone who was not at the meeting would have a reasonable idea of what was discussed and why certain actions were taken. A list of all the documents and exhibits used at the meeting. Full copies do not need to be included with the minutes that are kept permanently, but they are part of the record and they must be kept on file. And the municipal records retention schedule is followed for destruction of those records or when the records can be separated from the meeting files. So a record of all votes, decisions made and actions taken. The name of any member who participated remotely. And when there's remote participation, we all know that you are voting by roll call vote. Minutes must be available. If someone requests a copy of your minutes, you really have 10 days to respond. If the minutes have not been created, you will release them in draft form if necessary. But public records has said, and I recently had occasion to talk to an attorney about this, if the minutes have not been created, you are not required to create them, but you would then... You could certainly be asked and would have to release notes that are being used in the formation and creation of those minutes. Approval of minutes must come in a timely manner and the law says it is the next three meetings or within 30 days, whichever is latest. It is encouraged that meetings... Meeting minutes be available at the next regular open meeting if possible. So around public records and some of the materials we use in open session, this would mostly be related to the superintendent, but there could be a couple other instances on... Positions that the school committee has advice and consent on. And materials that are used in the deliberations of hiring individuals such as applications and supporting materials, certifications, letters of reference are excluded from the public record. Resumes are part and will be made part of the public record. Performance evaluations, again in the case of the superintendent typically, are included only if materials were created by members of the public body for purposes of the evaluation. There are some groups that use materials from other staff members in the district and those would not be part of the public record. Materials used in a performance evaluation bearing on an individual's professional competence, if created by members of the public body for the purpose of evaluation, are releasable public records. Otherwise, personnel information is exempt. Otherwise, personnel information is exempt from public disclosure. So typically, the individual evaluations are not automatically released, but if they're requested, they are releasable documents. Most school committees, uh, public bodies that I'm aware of, uh, deal with a compilation evaluation in an open public meeting. And the open meeting law says that compilation document must be made available to the public as soon as it's shared with the school committee. So however you do that, I know you all post your packets online. If you were a committee who did not, you must make that compilation available in your central office or some other site where it could easily be accessed by members of the Everybody's favorite, executive session. You must convene in open session prior to going into executive session. Your agenda must indicate that you will, um, open your meeting in an open session. You must state publicly the purpose for the executive session. And that purpose must be stated with as much specificity as possible without giving away, without compromising the confidentiality of the executive session. You must conduct a roll call vote, as you know, to enter executive session, and you must obtain an agreement of the majority of members of the body, which means if you're a 10-member body and six members are present, for example, all six members must vote to go into executive session. And you must announce when you go in, as part of the motion, whether or not you will reconvene in open session. This allows access to the public to any decisions you might be announcing at the conclusion of your executive session. And you must, it's tempting, but you must only discuss matters for which executive session is lawfully called. And while that may seem pretty basic, it's sometimes committees, and it's not just school committees, it's, it's other public bodies get into executive session, and they're tempted to go astray of the purpose that they've entered for. I'm sure that you have a chair that doesn't allow that to happen here in Greenfield. And if you go into an executive session where rules are not strictly followed, and somebody does, um, file an open meeting law complaint, uh, one of the, the remedies that could happen is that any actions taken in that executive session could be nullified. So it's always important to remember to follow those rules and stick to your agenda and the purposes for which you went into executive. You must conduct roll call votes, uh, for all votes during executive session. If remote participation is allowed in executive session, the member must state at the start of the executive session that no other person is present or able to hear the discussion. The public body may authorize by a simple majority vote the presence and participation of others at the remote participation, participant's location. The purposes, you're probably all familiar for, with, but it seemed like a good idea just to include them here and go over them quickly. So, um, reason one is to discuss an individual, public officer, employee, or staff members' reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, discipline or dismissal, complaints or charges against the individual. And if the individual involved requests it, that meeting must be held in open session. Discussion of professional competence always happens in open session unless, there is an exclusion for that, unless that professional competence is part of a disciplinary action or a criminal complaint brought against an individual. An individual has rights in executive session, I'm sure, as you all know, and importantly, to receive written notice at least 48 hours prior to the executive session, to request that the session be open, to be present during all deliberations that involve the individual, to speak on their own behalf, to have a council or representative present for the purpose of advising, but not for active participation, and to create an independent record by audio recording or transcription of that executive session. Purpose two is to conduct strategy sessions. I'm sorry, did anybody have questions about purpose one, where you're discussing an individual in executive session?
Did I hear you say that professional competence is always discussed in public session?
Professional competence is discussed in public session unless it involves a disciplinary action or a criminal complaint against an individual. Those are the only exceptions for it being discussed in executive session. So, purpose two is to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Committee must identify the specific non-union personnel, both in the posting and in the motion to go into executive session. When discussing the contract of non-union personnel, the presumption is that professional competence of the individual has already been discussed in open session. And any contract ratification votes must be taken in open session for individual contracts, and votes must be released in a timely fashion. So the committee may vote to ratify in executive session, and if the committee indicated before going into the executive that they would return to open session, the best place to ratify that contract in public would be right after that meeting. It could also be done at your next regular meeting. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting would hurt the committee's bargaining or litigating position, and the chair so declares in the motion to go into executive session. The chair must declare that deliberating during an open session would have a detrimental effect. Litigation must be pending or immediately threatened. Sometimes we hear that someone has an attorney and they're going to sue. That's not reason enough to enter executive session. It, it must be pending or immediately threatened. Committee may approve final terms of an exec, and execute a collective bargaining agreement in executive, but should disclose in open session following the executive session. If by some chance the committee did not anticipate ratifying in executive and did declare at the beginning of the meeting that they would not return to open session, that can be done at the next open meeting of the body. So you can go into executive session to discuss security personnel or deployment of devices such as cameras or other security devices in schools, school buildings, investigate charges of criminal misconduct, or consider filing criminal complaints. Reason six, to consider the purchase, exchange, or lease or value of real estate if the chair declares that the open meeting would hurt the committee's negotiating position. Generally, the body should identify the specific piece of property it plans to discuss, unless disclosure of that information would compromise the purpose of secrecy. Purpose seven is to comply with any general law, special law, or federal grant an aid, and the chair must cite the statute that requires confidentiality or a closed session in the motion to go into executive session. And the body should disclose information unless public disclosure would compromise the purpose for secrecy. Two, purpose eight is to consider or interview applicants by a preliminary screening committee. This is typically with school committees for the superintendent position. The chair must declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect in obtaining qualified candidates. Interviews cannot be conducted in executive session if applicants have already passed an initial screening committee. The Attorney General has said that, for instance, in the case of a screening committee for superintendent candidates, the screening committee could review resumes and decide on applicants to be interviewed. The committee, the screening committee could then have more than one round of interviews in executive session, but once that screening committee has identified two or more finalists to move forward, the finalists and any other interviews must be done in open session. You may meet an executive to confer with a mediator, and you may meet to discuss trade secrets or confidential, competitively sensitive, or proprietary information that typically relates to boards, uh, energy boards that are discussing trade secrets and such around New and emerging, everybody wants to know about open meeting law and social media. So the Attorney General's Office has issued some guidance around this, and members may communicate with members of the public through any social media platform. However, must be careful not to engage in deliberation with other members of the public And the Attorney General's words were to proceed with caution. It's, we all want to keep our constituents in the community informed of happenings, and we'll do that by posting on social media, right? Everybody loves social media. It's kind of the last thing we typically do as we're closing down the night, check what's happening, uh, what's happened during the day, what might be happening tomorrow. It is not a violation of the open meeting law if a quorum of your members have seen that post. It begins to become tricky if, if a quorum of the members begin to comment with opinions on those posts, especially if it's a, a topic before your committee. List serves are an invaluable place to gather information from other people who do the same work as you. However, where a quorum of members of the public body subscribe, the public body risks unlawful deliberation. You cannot participate in discussions which involve matters within the jurisdiction of the body without engaging in unlawful deliberation. Again, the Attorney General's words are proceed with caution related to matters within the jurisdiction of the public body. List serves are a great place to ask questions, to ask of other committees if they have policies that you might be considering, or that you would like your body to consider, to get samples of those policies or other documents that you could then forward on to your superintendent to be included in a school committee packet on, on an agenda to be discussed. Just be careful not to get into providing your opinion on matters before your body.
Um, I see member Hollington.
Oh, hi. Sorry.
The M A S C lister, I don't know, I guess we could ask each other how many people are on. But I see people, uh, you know, asking a question and giving the reason why they're asking, we're having a terrible problem with this, and nobody knows what to do, and this member of our administrative body said blah, 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 and that one said, and it's really exposing everything they feel in the whole problem. And then other people write back. I mean, it's on the M A S C. So I, my question is, does M A S C monitor the list serve to give feedback back to people?
There are folks assigned to monitor those list serves, and they do provide feedback. Yes, is an answer to that question.
I would say that is interesting.
It can sometimes be interesting. That's a good term. It can, sometimes people do include a little too much information. Yeah. I would agree with you on that. I follow, I tend to follow because I have some more interaction with the Executive Secretaries Group. And that is actually a group that would be outside of open meeting law. So the monitoring of that group is much easier, and they really are a helpful bunch to one another across the state in providing assistance, especially to new executive secretaries who are trying to figure out their way. Oops. Oh, list serves. So electronic messaging, such as email or text messages, to communicate with other public body members during a meeting or outside of a meeting. With few exceptions, any use, this comes from guidance provided by the Attorney General. With few exceptions, any use of electronic messaging by the public body members to communicate with a quorum of public body members during or outside a meeting may constitute private deliberation, which is prohibited. Electronic messaging during a meeting by less than a quorum, while not directly prohibited, is discouraged if those electronic communications are not shared at that meeting with members of the public who are present. So it's, it's never bad advice to not text members of the committee that you're meeting We suggest, and many members have, uh, family members, children, elderly parents, they like to keep their phone on the table, and if a text message comes in, they, they will say that they're going to answer it. It, again, it's never bad advice not to respond to one of your fellow committee members that's texting you during a meeting. Open meeting law encourages government transparency. So this is when members of the public text you or email you during a meeting with great advice or information that they have that no one else has. It's always a good idea, according to the Attorney General, that if you are going to accept and look at those kinds of messages during an open public meeting, that you share those messages with your fellow committee members at that public meeting, so that everybody has the same advice and information, no matter how valid it is, I suppose, while making And that's that, unless you all have any other questions. No? Anybody? Okay.
I did have a few questions. Let's, um, let's make sure that you have a mic.
Yeah.
I think we can probably come back to the table, right? I mean, you're welcome to sit there if you want.
Do you, do you mind if there are questions?
No.
Uh, you said a few things that, that I wonder about. When the committee, you know, people get up and leave meetings. So we're a committee of seven.
Mm-hmm.
When the, when the group drops below, any public body drops below its quorum, the meeting ends at that moment?
Well, yes and no. Members may have left the room to use the restroom and will be returning. In that, in that sort of case, kind of discussion could continue, but you would not be able to take any votes with less than a quorum of the committee. If you anticipate they've just left the room to, and they will be returning in a short time, if someone's giving a presentation, or if you're having discussion, if you find that the discussion is of significant importance and you've lost a quorum, but you know that at least enough are coming back to have a quorum, you could suspend your discussion until the quorum returns.
If the person goes home, at that moment...
If you lose a quorum...
The meeting's over.
The meeting is over. There could be cases where you might have someone making a presentation on a school program that isn't going to require a vote. Out of courtesy to that individual, you could allow the presentation to finish so that the members present and the people watching would see that presentation. But yes, at that point, you lose a quorum, your meeting's over.
You can't vote to adjourn, because you don't have a quorum to vote, right?
The meeting would be over, right.
The meeting's just over, no adjourn.
The chair would still state that because of the loss of the quorum, the meeting was ending.
Okay, I have another question.
Yes.
Um, all contracts are a public record.
All contracts are a public record. The, um, with the push to public records access, it's recommended that contracts, actually, not everybody does it, but it is recommended that you post contracts on your website for ease of access. It also reduces, uh, staff time copying and/or sending electronically records to people. They're available on your website, is a simple answer.
In the beginning, when you were talking about posting requirements, you're talking about posting that's conspicuously visible, and most schools, many schools post electronically, but that system could go down. but that system could go down. Are you still required to post in a physical location, or do you only have to post in electronic location?
So that's determined by your town clerk and mayor. Some districts only post electronically. The Attorney General notes that sometimes technology goes down and websites will go down. And the advice is that, and I think typically this is probably the case, that if the website is down for less than a period of six hours, the postings remain intact and nothing is affected. But beyond six hours, there could be the requirement to repost the meeting. As long as it's accessible, basically 24/7, again, websites can go down for various reasons.
So is the recommendation that you keep one physical?
That depends on how the city has defined posting requirements. Some clerks require the physical posting and the electronic posting. Some require still only the physical, and some require only the electronic.
I think I had one more.
Yeah, so it's the city who identifies the site for posting and how it occurs.
Could you clarify when in minutes in the public record, in a vote, you have to say who voted which way?
Well, that tends to be more of a decision that the committee makes. Some committees are perfectly fine with a six to four vote, or six, four, one, or six, three, one, meaning one person is absent. Some committees have decided that they will indicate the members who are voting in the negative, or if the affirmative is the minority, they will note who voted in the affirmative. They will, you will always note the name of the person who abstains, so you know who did not vote.
Not abstains, but otherwise it's your committee policy.
I think it's up to the committee typically. I haven't read anything in the open meeting law that requires noting names of people who vote, who oppose a motion. Your committee could set norms and protocols around that, or a policy.
It's my understanding that any vote that requires a roll call must be noted.
A roll call, yes. A roll call must be noted, absolutely, yes. Thank you.
And the last question I had was, sometimes I go to a meeting and I find that during the meeting, my picture's been taken and it's on some sort of website where someone else is. And I'm just wondering, is that allowable?
You know.
You don't know what's happening?
So I'm not a public official, and I find it annoying. But as a public official, it is allowable. You are publicly elected official, and as such, you give up some rights to privacy when you're at a public, open public meeting.
Well, thank you for answering the questions, and thank you for giving the presentation.
Oh, you're welcome. Anybody else? No?
All right.
Nice.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate you coming. I know that you and I had quite a back and forth to find a day, and I'm glad that it worked out today.
I am too.
Thank you. Would you mind pressing the blank button on that remote control?
I wouldn't.
Thank you.
I'm going to shut this off, too.
If you want, or you can just, you can just close the computer, I guess, when you're finished.
Thank you all for having me tonight. I appreciate the opportunity, and I'm always available by phone or email. If you have any questions, I promise I won't share them with the majority of the members.
Thanks again.
You're welcome.
So folks, we do also have an update from the Attorney General's Office regarding the open meeting law complaint. I'll go ahead and just quickly read it for the record. It states, Dear Ms. Nunez, this office received a complaint from Paul Giblon on June 3, 2019, alleging that the Greenfield School Committee violated the open meeting law. The complaint was originally filed with the committee on May 2, 2019, and the committee responded by letter dated May 15, 2019. In his complaint, Mr. Giblon alleges that the committee deliberated outside of a public meeting through email. Upon receipt of the open meeting law complaint, the committee examined its practices and acknowledged that its members had exchanged many emails that constituted deliberation outside of a posted meeting. The committee promptly took remedial action by releasing the improper emails to the public on the city's website and committed to refrain from deliberating outside of a meeting in the future. We resolve this complaint by informal action in accordance with 940 CMR 29.072A and find that the committee violated the open meeting law as alleged. See Open Meeting Law 201975, email communications on a matter with the public's body's jurisdiction violated the open meeting law. Open Meeting Law 20186, same. However, the committee has already taken corrective action by publicly releasing the emails that were exchanged in violation of the open meeting law, and therefore we order no further remedial action. See Open Meeting Law 201960. We order the committee's immediate and future compliance with the open meeting law and caution the committee that a determination by our office of a similar violation in the future may be considered evidence of intent to violate the open meeting law. We now consider the complaint addressed by this determination to be resolved. This determination does not address any other complaints that may be pending with our office or the committee. Please feel free to contact the division if you have any questions. And then it is signed by Sarah Chase, Assistant Attorney General, Division of Open Government. As part of our response to Mr. Giblon, we also stated that we would have participated in an open meeting law training, and we just did that today together as a body. I do know that a handful of us have also attended recently the charting the course by the MASC, which does also include a section on the open meeting law. Members have also received information about online trainings by the Division of Open Government. Those, I believe, are ongoing, and you can find them online. Are there any questions about the response from the Attorney General's Office? Okay. Thank you, everybody. Our next item is the Policy Section B first reading. We are taking this from the table from our July meeting. I will yield to member Karen, Chair of the Policy Subcommittee, to walk us through the first reading of Section B.
All right. So in the past, we've just read the policy we've decided to keep or change our policy to. I'm going to stick with that practice. Stop me if you have questions. We can answer questions as we can, or we can refer back to Subcommittee for more answers. So this is kind of a big one. Let's just go to it. So I'm going to remind everybody of how exactly we did this. You'll see, there'll always be two types of policies. There'll be one that was ours and one that was MASC's. Sometimes ours was, got all the strikeouts, and sometimes theirs does. If you notice, there'll be words in different colors. For example, in this first one, BBA, it's green. We added that word to this policy. You'll find others where everything's turned yellow. That's usually for his, hers, and their gender pronoun changes that need to be done. And then sometimes there's red. You'll see it as we go through about things that needed to be updated for charter law, for example. All right. So first up, we have, I think I may have gotten out of order. I have BBA first. Did I get mine out of order?
BBA is first.
Yeah, it's like that. Okay. I knocked them all out of order when I was reading through them. School committee strategic objectives was ours, and we decided to go with school committee operational goals as suggested by the MASC. I'm just going to read through it real quick. The school committee is responsible to the people for whose benefit the school district has been established. The committee's current decisions will influence the course of education in our schools for years to come. The committee and each of its members must look to the future and to the needs of all people more than the average citizen finds necessary. This requires a comprehensive perspective and long-range planning in addition to attention to immediate problems. The school committee's primary responsibility is to establish those conditions which will support the educational achievement of our students. The committee is charged with accomplishing this while also being responsible for wise management of resources available to the school district. The committee must fulfill these responsibilities by functioning primarily as a legislative body to formulate and adopt policy, by selecting an executive officer to implement policy, and by evaluating the results. It must carry out its functions openly while seeking the comments of public, students, and staff in its decision-making process. In accordance with these principles, the technique will involve periodically setting performance objectives for the school committee itself and evaluating their accomplishment, setting objectives for performance for each position and function in the system, allowing the people responsible for carrying out objectives to have a role in setting them, establishing practical and simple goals, and conducting a concrete and periodic review of performance against these goals. Any questions? Yes, Susan.
It's a perfectly fine policy. I just want to say that in 216, there were seven school committee meetings on the same policy, and it was rewritten to include items that we talked about tonight, to main, you know, open communication with the public and to conduct committee business openly, except where deemed necessary, as permitted by law, to utilize the advantage of executive session. I don't really care which policy we use. I just don't understand why, when there's a perfectly good policy that was just reviewed, we have to delete that entire policy. And I also want to say that the standard we have for our high school students for any kind of work they're doing, where they have to use reference material, is more than one reference. And I think where the only reference we're using is MASC and no other, and deleting our own prior work just makes the work, just makes prior work meaningful. We're going to get a whole new board in a few weeks. Do we delete everything this committee does? So I don't understand the need to eliminate a policy that we just redid.
Just to respond to you, Susan, I think part of the reason, so eliminating four and five on what we had originally, do you want me to read it aloud, Karen?
You can if you.
To maintain effective two-way communication with the public, staff, and students, to conduct committee business openly. I don't know that it's necessary for us to restate that, given that it's, that is open meeting law. I could absolutely be wrong, but I.
Doesn't matter. I don't know why there was a need to remove the policy that the committee works on seven times. It says his name today.
Are there any comments, questions, other considerations for Policy BA? Okay, Katie, if you can move on.
So we're going to, again, as long as I didn't take everything out of order, BAA. We, with some changes, decided to go with the MASC. I'm just going to state that often, ours were procedural oversteps and/or wordy and not clear to people, as that was what the Subcommittee thought. That is, you know, our job is a full committee to decide if that's accurate or not. A lot of these are just same thing but said a little differently. So evaluation of our procedures. The following areas of school committee operations and relationships are representative of those in which objectives may be set and progress appraised. Communication with the public, school committee superintendent relationships, school committee member development and performance, policy development, educational leadership, fiscal management, school committee meetings, performance of subcommittees of the school committee, inter-agency and governmental relationships, ethics and commitments to roles and responsibilities. When the committee has completed its self-evaluation, the members will discuss the results in detail and formulate a new series of objectives. At the same time, the committee will set an approximate date on which the next evaluation will be conducted. Implied in the concept of evaluation is an assumption that individuals and committees are capable of improvement. The school committee believes that its performance will be improved if evaluation is carried out systematically in accordance with good planning, conscientious follow-through, and careful assessment of results. Comments, questions?
We'll give you a second.
See, Mayor Martin.
Since this committee is always rotating, maybe there should be a specific date in that the committee does a self-evaluation.
Does anybody else have thoughts on that? Do we want to set a motion to send it back to Policy Subcommittee and make a date? Do we want to make a date as a group?
I see member Johnson.
I guess I think that there may be two separate documents in a way, the policies and procedures, which can be kind of generic. And then the committee, in minutes and through decisions, can choose timelines rather than etching it into a, into a document like this. That's more inflexible.
Member Exstrom.
Would adding the word annually serve that purpose?
I see member Ward.
This policy was adopted and voted on three years ago. So it's pretty flexible. I think you put a date in it. If you don't like it, you change it tomorrow.
Okay, my recollection of the deliberation was that we didn't, we did consider adding a date, and we wanted to leave it open. And as you can read in the policy, it states that there's dates, an approximate date set for the next evaluation to be conducted. I believe that we decided to have some flexibility here because of a lot of the things that have come up. You know, there's elections that come up, there's other business that comes up, and sometimes it's important for the date to be flexible. We didn't want to find ourselves in violation of our own policy simply because we had a considerable amount of important information that came up in July, and we didn't have time to squeeze in an evaluation of our committee. So that is my recollection, my recollection of the deliberation. If there's a motion to send this back to committee to can, to add in a date, please forward a motion to do so. I'm not seeing anyone. I'm seeing member Hollins.
Yeah. It's not that long ago that I attended a full special meeting of the school committee led by MASC, and it started with a PowerPoint that said, "The primary role of the school committee is student achievement." And when we redid this policy in 216, we added, because we had a whole meeting on this, Item 11, this is talking about how we evaluate ourselves, we added strategic planning in how we support student achievement. So the revision doesn't have student achievement. So I want to know why that's an improvement, because we put it in because MASC said it was their primary responsibility. The mayor brings this up all the time. He'll say we spent $100 million in five years. What are we doing with achievement? But seems to me we should, I'm not wanting to criticize the policy, it's just, I believe we should have goals. I believe we should be looking at achievement. We had a presentation on a school that, that needs help. So why did we remove student achievement as something we evaluate ourselves on?
I, my recollection was that we felt that it was involved in those 10 other goals, but I'm not against adding it as an 11th goal. That's, I'm just.
Well, I'd like to make a motion then that we add back, because we're talking about how we evaluate ourselves, and we're not strong on goal-setting, that we add back strategic planning and support of student achievement.
Is there a second? Member Exstrom.
Don't we say that in our operational goals, to establish those conditions which will support the educational achievement of our students? Let me ask you the question.
The policy outlines specific areas where we're going to do the self-evaluation, and my motion is to include student achievement. It doesn't have it there.
Oh, yes, Superintendent, and then Member Johnson?
My recollection of some of the conversation around this was really thinking about that delineation between the school committee's role and administration and teaching staff's role. And the school committee obviously has a key responsibility in focusing on student achievement, creating conditions for student achievement, setting a budget that allows us to provide the services necessary to students, coming up with new programs that meet student needs. But in terms of a self-evaluation, it's, it's a bit mixed to self-evaluate on the basis of student achievement unless you're also taking actions that allow other people to help carry out student achievement. So as a goal by itself, there's nothing wrong with focusing on student achievement. We focus on student achievement in the district, but as a policy board, it's unclear how you might evaluate your actions that contribute to student achievement unless there's a lot of conversation at school committee meetings. So if you added a goal about focusing on during committee meetings, setting agenda items that have to do with students, talking to students, asking for reports from the superintendent about student achievement, I would really applaud that. But evaluating the committee on student achievement neglects the teaching staff that actually carry out this work.
I see Member Johnson.
Just adding to that, it does include evaluating ourselves based on educational leadership, which since we've already stated our goal is educational achievement of our students, I think it would be included under that.
I agree with Member Johnson on that. That was my comment. Any additional comments, questions? Okay, we have a motion on the table. Susan Farber, could you read back the motion?
To add back strategic planning and support for student achievement.
Thank you. All those in favor? I see Member Hollins, one. Anyone opposed?
No.
Two opposed, and any abstentions? Two.
Oh, yeah. I did totally sorry.
Okay, let's, do we want to quickly redo that?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
I favor.
I see one. All those opposed, that is four, and abstentions? Two abstentions, so motion fails. We will continue onward. Are there any, any last things with B A A? Also remember, this is a first reading. If there's more that comes up, there's time to consider at a later date. Policy B B, Member Karen?
All right. So we just felt like M A S C.'s was clearer, it laid out the charter and the laws a little bit more fluidly. I'm actually, am I reading the right one? I'm actually wrong. We used ours. Yes, we used ours, except that we added some stuff. So, "State law supports a city's charter in determining membership in terms of office. The school committee is the governing board of the public school system. Although it functions as a duly-elected committee of city government, the school committee is, unlike other city departments, autonomous. It is authorized within limitations established by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to carry out the educational policies of the state and guide the educational process. Established by charter of the city of Greenfield and supported by state law, MGL, Article 4, Section 41, school committee, composition term of office. There shall be a school committee which shall consist of seven members. Six of these shall be nominated and elected by and from the voters of the town at large. The mayor shall serve by virtue of office as the seventh member of the school committee with all the same powers and duties as the members elected by the voters as school committee members." Term of office. The term of office for the six persons elected by the voters as school committee shall be for four years each with staggered terms beginning on the first business day of July after the annual city election until their successors have been qualified. State law supports a city's charter in determining memberships and terms of office. Compensation for the six persons selected is as dictated by city charter, Article 4, Section 4, 4. Should it say January, not July?
Yes, it should say January. Mm-hmm.
Okay. As I was reading, I was like, that's not, all right. Other than the January, not July, does anybody have any comments?
Member Ekstrom?
I actually just have a question. I thought the mayor was supposed to be a non-voting member on the Budget Committee? I could be wrong, or on Budget? No?
Mayor's a voting member.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I believe that Mayor Martin has, during the time that he served on the school committee as mayor, has generally abstained from the school committee budget vote. Is that accurate? But I don't believe that that's necessarily dictated in the charter.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Hollins?
I think it's a fine policy. I have a technical question. The policy is the school committee legal status, and this is all about legal status. Why did we put in payment? I thought that was a different policy, compensation of the school committee. That's my question. It doesn't have anything to do with the legal status.
I don't know that there is a separate policy for compensation. I guess I, I haven't reviewed it that well that today.
Yeah, sure.
Do you have to come to the mic?
Yeah, if you want to come to the mic.
The reference to the pay comes directly from your city charter, which is why it's included in there, because it's a bit of legalese. Nothing more. Just doesn't have anything to do with the legal status. Correct.
Mayorin?
Our particular charter allows for a compensation for city council members and school committee members, but to get that compensation, the city council has to create an ordinance, which they've done. So maybe the reference to the ordinance that exists, rather than the city charter article, is probably more specific.
Thank you.
We should send that back, maybe. Need a motion to send that back to clarify the ordinance?
I believe that there's, sure, let's be formal about it. Move to, I move to, to send this back to subcommittee to clarify the ordinance. Second by Member Johnson. All those in favor? I, okay, that is unanimous. Is anyone smelling something kind of burning smell?
Should we evacuate?
I think so. I smelled it earlier, but, yeah, okay, okay. Cam's like, we're out, let's go. Member Karen?
All right. Back to me again. Okay. So, school committee powers and duties. The school committee has all the powers conferred upon it by state law and must perform those duties mandated by the state. These include the responsibility and right to determine policies and practices and to employ a staff to implement its directions for the proper education of the children of the community. The committee takes a broad view of its functions. It sees them as legislative or policymaking. The committee is responsible for the development of policy as guides for administrative action and for employing a superintendent who will implement its policies. Appraisal. The committee is responsible for evaluating the effectiveness of its policies and their implementation. Provision of financial resources. The committee is responsible for adoption of a budget that will enable the school district to carry out the committee's policies. Public relations. The committee is responsible for providing adequate and direct means for keeping the local citizenry informed about the schools and for keeping itself and the school staff informed about the needs and wishes of the public. Educational planning and evaluation. The committee is responsible for establishing educational goals and policies that will guide the committee and staff for the administration and continuing improvement of the educational programs provided by the school district. Regarding personnel matters. The superintendent shall be appointed by vote of the committee and shall directly report to the committee as provided by law and perform all the duties that are prescribed by law and such other duties not inconsistent thereto as a majority of the committee may direct. The school committee shall appoint upon the recommendation of the superintendent, assistant associate deputy superintendent, school business administrator, special education administrator, school physician, school nurses, and supervisor of attendance. Such positions shall not report directly to the school committee.
When the, this policy was rewritten in 216, the then-policy committee went through all the laws of Chapter 71 and took out all the responsibilities of the school committee and added them so that a school committee would be advised. So one of these that's eliminated just came up at our last meeting, number 10. "The school committee establishes policies on levels of compensation, including benefits, for school principals and for other administrators and personnel not assigned to a particular school," Chapter 79, 59B. So I want to know why, we had a lawyer on the committee at the time, I want to know why, when there was such an effort to make sure a sitting school committee knew its responsibilities under the law and to put some in that seemed important, we're taking them out because they come up in discussion. Just came up two days ago.
I can say that the one you just specifically determining levels of compensation is actually written in policy Section G. Remember, we talked about it the other night? I actually went home and searched it.
Yeah.
Sometimes, as we were going through these policies, we wanted them to be easy to understand, quick to understand, and laid out very clearly. A two-page policy is not easy for the public to understand, and it was quite quick. And so it was covered somewhere else, so we didn't feel like we needed to rewrite the policy in every single opportunity it came up, is the way I remember it.
Any other comments or questions before Member Hollins?
So I'll just say for the record that we have a lot of turnover on the school committee. I think a policy that clarifies what are our statutory duties is really important. If it's more than a page, it's still really important that anyone who looks at our policy on what are our duties under the law of the state can see what they are, and to have taken some out, it doesn't make sense to me, because they're here to educate us. That's all.
Policy B, oh, sorry, Mayorin.
Just to follow along that same train of thought, the, I noticed in here the grants. So in the previous policy, the committee was involved with the grants. How do we do the grants now? No grants come to the committee? I haven't received or recalled any grant applications to the committee since, for a while. So if we're, if we had this policy in the past and we weren't doing it, what, what happened? So we must be receiving some grants. They don't come to the school committee. Our policy as it exists now asks, calls for them to come to the school committee.
Statutory.
Are you thinking of something specific?
Not without the budget book, but there's a number of grants. I'm sort of.
So, I mean, we do review grants through our budget deliberations.
So we have the E L T. grant. I haven't seen that grant for a while. Maybe it's a three-year grant, and that's why we haven't.
It is, yeah, it's a multi-year grant.
Then we have other grants that have not been here. So I would ask the superintendent, are all the grants signed by you and not the school committee? I don't know.
We, we follow the agenda set, so if there's a request for any particular grant to come forward, generally the committee expresses a particular interest. We go through grants during the budget process, and then I regularly report out. An example is, we applied for the grant to Governor Baker for safety and security monies. It was a very competitive grant. I informed the committee that I was applying for a grant. I implied the committee of the status of the grant, and then I informed the committee when we were awarded the grant, and I coordinated with the mayor's office and the town officials and departments that were affected by that. I'd be happy to bring summaries of grants or whatever information the committee's looking for here.
Yeah. My only question is, the, the school committee has a responsibility to accept grants and gifts, so we haven't been doing that.
Well, I disagree with that assessment. Yes, Member Hollins?
I have no issue with how we handle grants, but it's in the statute. That's why it went in our old policy. "School committee has a responsibility to accept grants and gifts for educational purposes," Chapter 71, Section 37A, "to create annuity accounts for employees," 71, 37B, "and to authorize prepayment of tuition for a period not to exceed three months to any private school approved program," Chapter 71, Section 71D. Those are important that school committee members know, and we do that, and we move money, and there's a law that says we can do that. And why would we take that out of our policy on what our duties are under the law? That's all. It doesn't make sense to have removed items 10 and 11.
One thread that I heard through the policy conversations was that if something is written into the law, it does not need to be repeated in policy. In addition, the, the laws that govern the Commonwealth change, and so when the law is repeated in the text of the policy, it then requires redundancy in updating the policy every time the law changes. By virtue of them being laws, we're obligated to follow them. I think in the process of going through this, we found lots of areas that the committee said, oh, we could do a better job of that, or it is, behooves us to review our policies more regularly. The very fact that we're reviewing all of our policies right now is a great opportunity to be more familiar with them, but the fact that folks don't know exactly what's in these policies is, kind of points to the fact that folks maybe could spend more time with the policy book in general, including myself. There's a, there's a lot of policies here on the book, but the laws are the laws are the laws, whether they're not in our, whether or not they're in our policies.
Thank you, Superintendent. I see Member Johnson?
I'm wondering if, to expedite our work, if we might consider a motion to change our, the rules of our discussion, so that if, if there's a, a motion on the table that we discuss as per our normal rules, but if people are just sharing an opinion that they have one turn to do so, and that they limit their comments to two minutes. So I make, I make the motion that we adjust our rules for the purpose of proceeding on this document, that if a motion is not on the table, that members have one turn to comment for two minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Member Ekstrom. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Two opposed. Motion carries. Yes, Susan?
Oh, I vote for it. Okay.
I thought I heard an "aye" over there.
I'd like to make a motion on policy B B A.
Mike, please.
Sorry. I'd like to move that we include the former item 10, determining levels of compensation, the school committee's duty to do so, and the reference to Chapter 71, 59B in policy B B A, and the reason is that this subject comes up often, and we're unclear of our duty.
Second.
Any deliberation? Yes, Susan?
MGL 71, Section 59B.
Okay, so that was moved by Member Hollins to add number 10 from the old policy into the new policy B B A, and that was seconded in by Mayor Martin. Any conversation on that?
I'm sorry. It was Cam?
Thank you. I see Superintendent?
It might be helpful to check the exact test, text of the DESI regulations, and we referred to it in the last public committee meeting, but it might be helpful to check that this language does not paraphrase, but is a exact description of the languages in the law. If you are going to cite it, it shouldn't, it should be some precise language. So I don't know if there's, I can't suggest a friendly amendment, but I would like the committee to consider, if you adopt the spirit of this, that you may still want to consider precise language.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that is, Member Johnson, what is your vote? Or you and I? All those opposed? I had Cam, Mayor Martin, Member Hollins, yes. All those opposed? Member Johnson and myself. Any abstentions? Abstention by Member Karen and Member Ekstrom, so motion carries. Do you have a motion? I want to mention for the record that it's 8:05. I, when we get to 8:30, I would very much like to move us into executive session, we have a few items that we need to discuss tonight, and I recommend to the committee that we do not go beyond 8:30 in our public session, so please keep that in mind as we're moving forward. Sex, Policy BBAA.
In that spirit, do we want me to continue to read the entire policy, or should I only read out the changes?
I think highlighting the changes is okay, unless there's someone who poses that.
Particularly where we're keeping the same policy.
So BBAA, we, I thought Greenfield's policy was a good choice. The only changes we needed to make were to change pronouns to they and their, and in one case, in number seven, it's they are instead of he, she, is. And at the end of number 11, we added in and other necessary documents in a timely manner. BBA slash BB, four Bs, I'm going to say too many if I say them all out. This was the MAS C policy. It just was a little bit more clear and added a couple of things, like making sure we received the ethics and commission summary of conflict of interest laws, making sure we get that annually. They also talks about completing the master's office commission online training that ours didn't get really talked that much about. And then we also added in, membership on a school committee is not limited to race, color, sex, gender, identity, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, pregnancy, or pregnancy-related condition. Cool? Yes? Maybe, I'm going to make something up, but if you had to be put on bedrest for pregnancy, that would be a pregnancy-related condition, for example. I'm sure someone with legal language would know more than me, but. Breastfeeding, for example. Any other questions on this one? All right. BBBC, school committee voluntary resignation. We kept Greenfield's, looks to me, I'm reading this correct, with no change. BBE? Did I miss something?
It's a typographical thing.
Oh, okay, where is? There we go, yes. I really should just adopt some glasses and move on with my life. BBE, we just changed a little language in our policy for, we just put in fulfilling the vacancy after share the responsibility, just a little bit more clear. Left at share the responsibility, wasn't sure if you meant just, we all just stayed as we were, or filling the vacancy. All right.
Hold on.
Yep, yep.
So when we had our last unexpired term fulfillment, we had some difficulties?
Yes.
Should that be included in here somewhere? What would happen in the event of tie or what have you?
We did have that discussion, and we wanted to include the legal references to the City of Greenfield Charter, Article 4.6, and that specifically directs folks to where that information is.
If you, yeah, if you look down, it says in case of impasse. All right. They're all mixed up right here. We are at BCA, school committee member ethics. We just struck the secondary title, change all of the pronouns. And then if you go down to the bottom of the page, recognize that action at official meeting is binding, and that they alone cannot bind or speak for the committee without prior authorization outside of such meetings. We just added without prior authorization. And then if you go to the next page, number six, we added regularly attend full school committee meetings and assign subcommittees to fulfill the responsibility of the possession, the position. Again, all of that gender pronoun will be changed in the final. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just seeing a place where we maybe need to catch another typo. It says, a school committee in his or her relations, so should that be a school committee member at the end of the first page of this one?
Okay, say again, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
At the end of page one of school committee member ethics, it says, a school committee in his or her relations, should that be a school committee member?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Member Hollins?
Number six on the second page, should that be assigned?
Yes, assigned, to attend your assigned subcommittees.
Mayor Martin?
The city council has a clause in the ordinance that requires a certain number of meetings to attend to receive compensation. Is this an area that we might, and put that in, or is there another policy that directs attendance?
Was that in the compensation policy? I believe it's in its own policy about compensation.
Okay.
If we don't get to that, for a minute. I believe that on BDA, that we wanted to get samples from other districts. It's, if you look at the top, it says, holding for samples from other districts. Because we, you know, we had our way of doing it, and we had the way the MAS C suggested, but we were just kind of wanting to maybe get a little bit more sample language, especially going into a major turnover. We should probably be looking at that pretty closely. So I'm just going to keep holding that policy for now. Unless I'm remembering wrong, someone can correct me.
I believe that we did pick it up for deliberation, again, at the subcommittee level, but since we don't have it here, I think the best thing to do is to bring it back to the full committee.
All right, so then we go to, make sure I'm getting all this correct. BDB, one of three, two, I've got them out of order again. Okay. How did that? All right, so this is our, I knew they were going down. They can stay there now. This is our policy with a couple of changes. Number four says, recognize members of the public who wish to make a short comments instead of allow. Instead of just secretary, we added recording secretary, and then, because the recording secretary would be, in this case, Susan Farber, and our secretary, in this case, is Susan Ekstrom, so we wanted to make that clear designation. And then we kind of worked on the language of the secretary duties. The secretary shall make accessible at full committee meetings a reference library, including Robert's Rules of Orders, selected MGL policy manual, and any other guiding documents as a school committee deems necessary. In the event that the recording secretary and/or recording is not available, the secretary of the school committee shall be responsible for capturing minutes of meetings.
Member Hollins?
This is the policy on officers of the school committee, not employees. And the part about keeping or causing to be kept, causing to be kept would mean working with the recording secretary, the journal, permanent records, that is what the officer does, to make sure we have records. And a recording secretary is not an officer of the school committee, it's an employee, so it was correct the way it was, that this officer of secretary is the officer who makes sure our public records are right, if they're not being kept by the recording secretary, or they're not being posted, or whatever. And it isn't the recording secretary who's an officer of the school committee, so I think this was the, correct the way it was before, and maybe it just needs to mention that the school committee will, that this person isn't expected to take minutes, but the recording secretary doesn't have the responsibility of our permanent records and keeping them, it's an employee.
Yes, Superintendent?
If that's the case, then I sort of question the second section of that, which is that the secretary will comply with state law and committee policy regarding notification of meetings. This is clearly pointing to the role of the executive secretary, and is not the function of the secretary of the committee. So there was an attempt here to delineate the multiple roles. There's an executive assistant that assists the committee, a recording secretary, and an officer who is a secretary. And in some districts, these are performed by different people, so it's an attempt to delineate this, that this is a supportive role to the committee as opposed to a direct action of the secretary of the committee.
I move that the policy subcommittee reconsider BDB, and just.
Thank you.
Take a look at how we're, we're writing recording secretary. Any comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I believe that is unanimous.
Good, keep going? Yep. Great. BDD, this is our policy. We just changed. Did I skip one?
Yeah, I don't think there's a change.
No, that's probably why I missed. Yeah, sorry, BDC is ours, and it stayed exactly the same. I shouldn't have kept, taken the staple out, took me 10 minutes to get the staple out, and I got it all mixed up. All right, back to BDD. Again, all of the gender pronouns to be changed, instead of school system, to change to school district. And then the superintendent may seek guidance from the committee, that says C, but I believe it's supposed to be seek guidance from the committee with respects to matters of operation whenever appropriate, instead of will have the privilege of asking, that was kind of strange language. But otherwise, that was that. Questions? Susan?
Member Ekstrom?
Should it be may seek?
Yeah, may seek.
Okay.
I'm putting it in my pile of things to go back and look at. People have the privilege of talking to the school committee. All right. BDE. Looks to me like, can I just speak with this?
Sure.
We went with the MAS C, but just added some language. Number five, subcommittees have authority to deliberate on items as referred by the school committee. And then a bullet point under number six, school committee members not assigned to a given subcommittee may attend and participate as members of the public at discretion of the chair. So, everybody, good? And then we're at BDF. And that is, again, our policy. We, there, really, the only difference between ours and MAS C was number nine, so we added it in. Advisory committees created under this policy are subject to the provisions of the open meeting law, just as a reminder. BDF A is talking about school councils, something our district has worked hard on making happen in the past few years, it's been great. We just, the MAS C reference manual did not say as outlined by within MGL, that's why it's highlighted. And it also did not say and approval in number four. So we were striking those two things. Or leaving approval.
They put them in or taking them out?
I think, well, they, the reference manual did not include them, that's what it's saying down there. I believe we said we wanted to keep them, actually, I'm trying to remember now, but the point was just to make you aware that that was the change between ours and the MAS C, rather than printing out both. We wanted the review and approval. Yes?
So if, earlier, we talked about having a strategy in the school committee, does the school improvement plans, or does the plan for the school? Is that in conflict with that earlier? I don't recall the language of the earlier.
The way I understand it is that the school committee makes a strategic plan, and the superintendent makes a school improvement plan, and then she presents it to us, and we review it and say, great.
Okay.
Many of the same words, but not quite the same. BFDA, exhibit one, E1, E is for exhibit, right? I'm not remembering this wrong? Okay, so this is, this is, talks about the school improvement plan. It was very similar to ours, but a little bit of changes in the language. Do you want me to read the whole thing? No? Anybody have any questions? Moving on. Again, we go back to another example, very similar, you can even see that some are exactly the same, but it was just a little bit more clear. We're just going to keep having some examples here? Yes, sir?
The, with the turnaround plans, have we made arrangements for that, because those are slightly different than the school improvement plan?
Do you mean to make a policy about turnaround plans?
To include the option that when that occurs, we have to follow these turnaround plan.
I don't know that we did, actually, because turnaround plan isn't put in place by the state telling us we need to do it, that that's not our, but that's a good question, we could ask and get an answer for.
Let's ask the state.
We ask later.
Well, your school improvement plans must be aligned to the goals and objectives in your turnaround plan.
We could.
Turn the district around unless the schools are aligned with the turnaround plan, that's just kind of how it works. Every year, the school improvement plans are created, and when you're a district in turnaround, they're created in alignment with your turnaround plan. Right?
In that case, we would need to see that plan. So does either of these new policies provide for that, the old one and this one?
No, we didn't think we needed to make a specific turnaround plan, policy, or add it to these, I guess, is the answer.
The turnaround plan was provided to the committee, however.
Yeah. All right. Again, we have an example of conduct of school council business, BDF A E dash three. And then we get to school attorney. This was a long conversation, as I remember, we had a lot of questions of exactly how, because stuff had come up. Specifically coming to, we added in or chair, however, when the superintendent or chair concludes that unusual types or amounts of professional leave or service may be required. And they will advise the committee and seek either initial or continual authorization, because it had come up before that the chair was unsure of exactly when she was supposed to ask for permissions, so we thought this was very clear. Does anybody have questions?
Member Hollins?
In the last policy, there was discussion about how sometimes you need different attorneys, so it was written in that you could, the committee and the superintendent may seek services from one or more attorneys to counsel and represent the school system on issues, so the superintendent had a need for an attorney that only dealt with. that only dealt with autism or sexual harassment or something, might be able to do that. But I see that in the new policy, you've left that out. So does the new policy intend that neither the school committee nor the superintendent could seek the services of more than one attorney and that's why it's been taken out?
Anybody else?
No. It doesn't necessarily exclude utilizing multiple attorneys. And it also indicates that the use of the city council could be used.
So you have a school attorney or you can use the city council and you can't use any other attorney?
It does not specifically state that one attorney must be employed by the school committee. It does not specifically state that we cannot have multiple attorneys employed by the committee.
I'm just questioning why that line was deleted? Because you didn't need it?
I think that that was it, yes. Because we did not say you couldn't do that. It didn't feel like it was necessary to include it. This does not say you can't seek other counsel. It says that if unusual types of professional services are needed, professional legal service, they should come forward to us first. But otherwise, it didn't feel like we needed to say. You can seek out a lawyer that's specific to this. Okay, anymore? Going to go to BE. We included the line, "Every meeting of the school committee and subcommittee of the school committee, regular or special, will be open to the public unless an executive session is held in accordance with state law." And we added some legal reference to that.
Member Hollins?
Just grammar, I don't think that needs to be in parentheses. Every meeting of the school committee and subcommittee.
She wants to take out the parentheses.
It was also applied to any task force of the school committee, I believe.
Is that accurate? Task force or automatically public meetings?
I mean, if it's an advisory committee established by the school committee, then yes, they are subject to open meeting law. If it's a task force that the superintendent has put together, that is not subject to open meeting law.
Should the policy mention that if it puts in subcommittees? An advisory committee?
I believe the policy on subcommittees delineates what's a subcommittee, which would include an ad hoc subcommittee for the purpose of advising the committee. So that's under the definition of a subcommittee.
Member Ekstrom?
My suspicion is that Member Hollins is wondering, like, about the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee.
The Special Education Parent Advisory Committee, otherwise known as the CPAC, is also... It's an advisory committee to the school committee and it is subject to open meeting law. What I'm hearing Member Hollins say is, "Would the committee like to include a line that indicates that advisory committees are also included in this?" I believe it was mentioned earlier in a policy that we just read. And if Member Hollins would like to put forward a motion to suggest adding language, that is fine. Member Hollins?
I'd like to make a motion to change the language of this sentence so that it reads, "Every meeting of the school committee, its subcommittees and advisory committees, comma, regular or special."
Is there a second? Any additional deliberation? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Mayor Martin, what is your vote? You were an aye. Okay, that was unanimous, thank you. Okay, so it is just right before 8:30. And there's still more left in B. However, I am moving to table the rest of Section B, first reading, starting with BEC, B as in boy, E as in electric, C as in car. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of tabling the remainder of Section B, first reading? Aye. Anyone opposed? I think that was unanimous. A quick note on Section B, sure?
I just want to remind members of the public that when we post the packets for the policy sections, they're all available online. They show the old version with strike throughs, the new version. So, for example, when the committee takes this up again, the remaining 30-odd pages are available online now in tonight's packet so folks can look on from home with popcorn.
Thank you. So we do have a couple of items for executive session. I'd like us to take a vote to move into executive session and then take a five-minute break and reconvene in the meeting room that we generally go to for executive session. I move to enter into executive session for MGL purpose number one and three. One, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. And also for number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation, litigating body, litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. This is relating to Unit C, Unit A, and admin assistance. Is there a second? Second by Member Ekstrom. Can we have a roll call, please?
Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Member Nunes?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, that is unanimous. We are now in executive session. We will not come back other than to adjourn, as far as I know.